Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 4th Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable. We have several different informative topics to go over today. Right to it. This is the time of year after the Labor Day holiday where we usually go, summer's over and there's four months left in the year. Well, and a little bit of a shock after the quote unquote summer slowdown. This year, we had no such summer slowdown, so we're continuing to sprint. And it's a marathon sprint, not just the difference between a sprint and a marathon. So I commend you all for hanging in there and really appreciate it. So why don't we go through the rolling agenda? So that we have the opportunity to be on the same page together. So next week, as I understand it, both Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Phi will be remote. So the only impact of that is whoops, wrong week, Catherine, as I'm writing on my paper. You'll just, we will have an added CWS executive session, so you will just miss that. We have somewhat of a light work session day that day as a result of how things have worked out. Then
Can I ask a question about that? Do we actually have, it says reconvene 1 to 4 p.m., but there's no topics or are there topics?
Not at this time.
Okay.
So then September 16th and the 23rd, Commissioner Willie will be on vacation. And just so you know, Vice Chair Teresa, I am away on Friday, the 12th through Monday, the 15th on vacation for my nephew's wedding in Montana. So you'll be on point as Vice Chair should anything come up. Then for the following week of September 23rd, Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Snyder, you're both slated to go to WEF Tech, right? Okay. And that happens later in the week, so we just won't have Commissioner Willie on the 23rd either. But everybody else will be around, right? Yeah, okay, terrific. Any questions on items that are on the rolling agenda for those weeks? Okay. October. This is where we have an additional CWS Learning Day or whatever we're, we're still calling them learning days, right? Okay, boardwork session days. And that happens on Friday, October 10th, right? Yeah, so we'll have the roundtable, sorry about the order, but we'll have a roundtable on Thursday, the 2nd. Then see. I'm just jumping to out of office plans. I will be out from Thursday, the 16th through Sunday, the 19th. So I will be here for the meeting, the 14th, but Vice Chair Teresa, I wanted to highlight that. Then as part of our our continued work, we see that as a result of some continued work on libraries that for the Governance and Funding Project on Tuesday, the 7th, we'll have that coming to us. We'd asked for some further information on the AMR topic. And then we have some outside speakers helping us with the additional funding revenue options project and the transportation funding options project too. Oh, and look at that, a museum update. So we've got a lot of work coming up in October. So I think I'm going to enjoy that light Tuesday, next Tuesday for all it's worth. So we've, we'll be hearing later today more about finance. So anytime you see finance coming up, you know, our, our little radar should, should be going up that we're continuing to do some hard work there. Yes, ma'am.
Meta just pointed out that October 3rd is the jail tour.
Yes.
Did you, okay.
It's already on our calendar.
Yeah, I was just what
District Eight.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, yes. Thank you. Commissioner Willie.
I did, I gave a
The, the jail tour isn't on other meetings or isn't listed currently under other meetings. But the AOC District Eight meeting is listed and you may recall this is the one where we learned pretty recently that Multnomah County or, or our, what's that position called, our District Eight rep decided to change the date and the, not the location, but the date on us without any discussion. So, and then we have the Annual Housing Forum on October 30th. And I really want to urge you all to attend that. That includes our Housing Advisory Committee as well as the Homeless Solutions Advisory Council. And then congratulations to Ms. Angie. She'll be participating at the ICMA Annual Meeting and Conference and she will be completing her second year of a third year term in, in serving in the presidential related position, first the incoming, then the on point, and then the outgoing. So a job well done there. We, you've kept us well informed related to that. Then we go into the month of November and the year is going to fly by as quickly as we're going through this rolling agenda. It, it's always impressive to me how quickly this time of year goes. In November, once again, we will have the double header of both a Board of County Commissioners Roundtable as well as a CWS Work Session Day. Those two happening on Thursday, November 6th and Friday, November 7th. And let's not forget that November 11th isn't just meetings canceled, it is the Veterans Day holiday. So that's on a Tuesday. So let's see, I haven't had a chance to digest other things myself. We do have the AOC Annual Conference. I haven't decided how I'm going to attend that. I'm assuming they'll still have the business meeting remote as they've had since COVID. I did go down last year just for the business meeting. But in doing so, I recognized that there's a difference in the experience between going for the whole AOC Conference versus attending just the business meeting. So I just don't know what I'm going to do yet. I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait on that, which means I probably won't be able to get a room at the, the hotel, conference hotel, but there are plenty of hotels down that area.
You can always look at that. You got 24 hours before you arrive.
Okay, I'll think about that.
They're pretty lax about that as long as you do it before 24 hours. Some of them are 72 hours, 24 is usual.
Okay, I'll look into that. Thank you. Hadn't thought of that. Oh, thank you. And then there's the month of December, and this year we're gifted with three Tuesdays. That doesn't happen very often. So it's really nice because business does stack up. I'm going to go backwards. On Tuesday, the 16th, I keep saying that it's the 17th. So I apologize to our two directs. We have your reviews coming up that day for our CAO Annual Review and our County Council Six Month Review. So congratulations to Alex. He's been here three months and I know it's been an amazing three months. So not anything like when he interviewed with us last fall that we thought would be happening.
He's still here.
And we're grateful for it. Yes, indeed. So and we're going to, I'm really going backwards here, folks. We do have a roundtable on December, December 11th. So that will be good as we queue up the new year, knowing that Willie will hit the ground running. We'll be going over our, our funding options or general revenue options and for the transportation funding options on the 9th. And I'm not quite sure what the update is on CAT because by then we will have had the groundbreaking for the Beaverton Center. And I bet Meta can tell us what that date is. Is that in November? No? Oh, that's late in October, I think. Yeah, yeah. So that's good. So we'll be taking deep breaths at different points along the way. You can expect in your inboxes, speaking of the, the reviews for our two county appointed folks to the board, that you'll receive the request to complete the review surveys. And what we learned with the new system this year is you really need to reflect on the goals and the outcomes, the, the results and include your commentary in the comments section. So it isn't just a matter of hitting radio buttons. So because that is the data that our, our colleagues will be receiving. So any other comments or thoughts on our rolling agenda?
Just information.
Yeah.
Oregon Fair Convention is at Wingspan, the shit's first time it's ever been.
Oh, wow.
And that's the 16th through the 18th.
Of which month?
October, and I will be attending the banquet on Friday night, the 17th.
Great.
The cat ribbon cutting is Friday, October 24th.
Yep, that's great. That's great. Yeah, there's, there's really a lot, a lot going on. So thank you staff for keeping us very organized. I know I can really work well off of my Outlook calendar, so it helps a lot. Roundtable planning is listed here. The roundtable plan has not, the dates haven't changed. And we're, we're finalizing the topics as, as we go. So no new news to report there. Okay? Alrighty, well, hey, that went five minutes faster than we projected. That's terrific.
Here, I, may I ask a question here? There's not, if we're jumping from one topic to another.
We were going to go from one to two.
May, may I just interject? I heard from Meta yesterday that our WAC, I need to, we need to reappoint me
Oh, okay.
To our WAC for, and they're expecting
The Metro Regional Waste Advisory Committee, right?
Yes, and I, I bring that up. I don't know, and apparently they need it soon. So
Is that because your term expired and we have to renew you or what?
It's because, yes. But, but remember, this is a brand new RWA, so they had short terms. I was, that's why it's, that's why they're trying to establish the, the rotation process.
Well, does anybody else want to jump into garbage?
I didn't think, I didn't think there'd be a race to the AMR. But I thought, I just
Recommend Commissioner Teresa continue serving.
Nice, second that.
Okay, so thumbs up. Terrific. Jerry, you want a thumbs up on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. For your undying spark.
I've even been making a note for myself, so I don't forget how much fun that is. And Meta can write up whatever appropriate email or memo is needed for that. Okay, well, for the next topic, BCC Big Topics for Second Half 2025 through 26. So you may remember how in late 2022, we switched from using board initiatives to looking more comprehensively at the overall priorities and programs that either the board was directly involved with or that we needed to be significantly mindful of in order to ensure we understood and continue to understand what we are asking our staff to do as an organization. At the time, I put together a big massive table that illustrated all kinds of things. And from our review of that, you asked me to pare it down a little bit. So I did. And now we have new things as we've all learned over the course of the last four to six months. So last month, I spoke to this topic. I just gave you my verbal overview. My thinking was that I would give you that context as I saw it. And I would come back this month with more of an illustration of it. We would have discussion, questions, comments, you name it. What I also refer to as the plate getting messier first. And then from here, we can work with Ms. Angie and her team so that October, at our roundtable, we can either come back in with options or, or, you know, something so we have a clearer path as we go into 2026. So once again, just a reminder, this is just a word table. And yeah, I have to play with lots of columns and rows. And I can't seem to make it fit on one page and still be readable. Also, I want to share a couple of things. I'm sorry that this has come in so late. But as you know, with, with my recovery from the heart attack, I had to take two weeks off for health needs minimum. Cardiologist thing. And so I'm easing back into work, but I managed to put this together. Ms. Angie and I and her team have not had any time to look at how bad I've gotten things. So I apologize that you've only gotten it today, but like I said, I do want to walk through this. The other thing is since the heart attack, my eye prescription has changed in six months. So I've got new lenses coming in. I get a massive headache right here by the afternoon. So you're going to see me looking down at my paper quite a bit because it's really weird. So anyway, it's, it's just a little unusual. So not to be disconcerting at all. I wanted to explain what's happening. So so what I did was I deleted the prior year quarters. Okay, so we're just, we're here at calendar year 25, so calendar quarter three, which is fiscal year 26, Q1. Okay? And so the red line, and I'm not a magician, I can't make it go to the second page properly. So you're, I have a red pen if you really want to draw it in on your second page. Happy to share. So the first rows on state ledge engagement, I brought back in the state legislature because we know, particularly with the context that the state is in now, the state's having financial difficulty too. So we're going to have to be more active than we've been previously. Yes, we have a fantastic government relations team, but we're going to have to spend more time putting together what, quite frankly, we can't continue to do even though it's mandated. So that's why that is enumerated. Then we have the annual proposed budget development. We know that that is, takes extensive time through our executive leadership team, the, all of the senior management as well as employee engagement in the latter couple of months. So you know, that's, that's a big load for our management team, particularly in calendar year Q4 and then the first half of the year. As we go through these rows, interrupt with any questions, okay? Then supplemental budgets, as I understood it from the roundtable last month, yes, August 14th. Sorry, I get a little breathless talking still. We usually have three supplemental budgets a year in the September-ish timeframe, in the January-ish timeframe, and then in May, prior to the next fiscal year. So I tried to put that in here. The Facilities Condition Index, I guess I probably don't need to call it that anymore because that's done. But the CIP is something, is a tool that we're continuing to use very actively. So I'll correct that label.
This is more like now our tracking of the implementation of it, of the facility CIP? Is that what we're really, I mean, I know
The CIP, we just, this was our second year of having, the third year of having a CIP. And we're continuing to learn more and have additional responsibilities. For example, I messed up and see the line that says morgue facility solutions? That should actually be a bullet under the CIP. Because, because of the way the state has changed things, they're not providing us with the same medical examiner autopsy support that they used to. And so we're now liable, not to use a legal term, we, we're now on the hook for building up our own morgue facilities. And that's still very much in a research planning stage. So
I see your notice about the financial, it says financial plan. I missed that to begin with, but it's really around trying to figure out how to finance.
How to fund. Now that we have the information and the capital and like, how do we fund? And how do we prioritize the critical needs of maintaining what we have and also the growth of the community?
Yeah.
Are we performing this service now?
The autopsy.
Yeah, the autopsy and this morgue stuff, it's just, we need to enhance it. Is that what you're telling?
We do not have a facility within Washington County. So that's part of the challenge within this year's CIP connected to your operating budget. We did fund a study which is underway and that will be coming to your board with options to move forward of short, short term and long term. This is not an inexpensive endeavor because in essence, the whole facility needs to be of medical grade.
So the facility cost and then of course, the operational cost. Am I remembering correctly that the operational side of it was about a million and a half a year?
You may have a better memory than I. I do not want to follow up with that information.
Yes, and I don't know what the other side is. That's what we're looking forward to. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a note on that ops too.
And Jerry, you're gonna, on the left side of this CIP Facilities Condition Index, you're gonna change that label to something
Just
ongoing.
VIP.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then the morgue I'll put underneath there like I intended, but didn't catch. So yeah, it's just, we, the CIP tool is still somewhat new for us and we've really had to make up for lost time. So, you know, our needs are substantive. It's not just a matter of, okay, you know, we keep programming in the misstep work and executing that and taking care of other facilities. We're making up for lost time. The state of disrepair as I was dismayed to learn. And then there's, as Ms. Angie highlighted, keeping up with growth. You know, we've really challenged our facilities team because we've added additional affordable housing solutions that the county owns and operates. We've added the two different CAT campuses. So there's a lot there. And yeah. I left community service level because this is a tool that we can use to figure out how do we keep rightsizing what we, within the realm of mandates and community needs, how can we right-size what we can achieve without burning our staff out? I'm really worried about the current state of affairs that we're burning people out. So as I reread the adopted budget summary in advance of the August 14th Roundtable, I was struck by how while we did cut some services to balance the budget, and then we cut headcount for the balanced budget, we were still on the hook for delivering level of mandated services. And the wording in the budget talks about spreading that over existing staff. And it has only taken me a couple of months to realize that that's not just stressing staff out, that's burning staff out all over the organization. And I think we are going to have to address that problem as we move forward. And we can't just hope that new revenue options are going to fix it someday. Or we're going to keep losing people. The order of these rows may leave something to be desired. So just write that over in your margin or something and you can give me your thoughts later in our conversation. The CCICPO update, that's still coming to us. Oh, and I, on the rolling agenda. Grace, I saw that on the rolling agenda and I think I may be behind my colleagues in updates on that. It's coming September 23rd, so I need a briefing. Thank you. The, the Library Cooperative with Governance and Funding Project, hopefully I've continued to reflect this correctly where that work continues, then in the beginning part of next year, the IGAs get updated, and then the new levy takes effect from July one of twenty-six through June thirtieth of twenty thirty-one. Yeah.
I'd just like to make a comment about this, as we are looking at a new structure for how we distribute funds, I think that we need to build into here, we need to be aware that there, there needs to be double checks on how, how that new structure is working. So, wasn't there, I think there is an idea, I don't know to what extent, we all have talked about it as a board, about having some levy, both, for both levies, having a board liaison that works on, on an annual basis for the levy review. It may have just been an idea. So, I'm not talking about the levy, I'm really talking about the process by which we determine usage at the libraries, that, that work that's gone on to move from a, almost a foot traffic type of methodology to a user system within ten minutes of the libraries, that, and that's really changed a lot of how, how we distribute funds, so that's built into the WCCLS process, and that's what I'm talking about.
And it gets institutionalized through the IGAs?
Yes.
And then you're talking about some means to-
Review.
Oh, okay.
I think it's a, it was probably, it just be-
Somewhere in future years, from twenty twenty-seven and beyond, it's tracking, assessing how the governance-
I think it's bringing our partners along with us, so that in twenty thirty-one, or twenty thirty, or whenever it is, we're, like, our partners in this are with us.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all, happy to add a note, but I'm not gonna be here after twenty-six, so,
Well, that-
Write it out how you would like, and the note can be added.
Perfect.
In some regards, Jason, I was, I've been telling in conversations about the levy that back in the day, when I was first appointed to Hillsborough City Council in ninety-two, I was appointed to the WCCLS board, and Lou Ogden was the chair, there were several of us elected sitting around the table, that governance-
That's changed.
Changed, and so that the electeds were evidently removed, and so I think we're looking at going back to that. But that's just a conversation right now, we haven't had that necessarily with Lisa or anybody else, but that's certainly-
And hasn't come to the board either.
No.
Yeah.
But that's not really what I'm, that wasn't the piece that I was referring to, I was referring to more the financial structure.
Yeah.
So, let's be careful about what this tool is. This is not the program tool. Okay? That's Ms. Angie's staff and the program tool. This is just looking at what our load is, okay? So, I'm happy to add a note so that you've got a board tool to see that, but you guys figure out what it needs to say. Okay? The Washington County Library Levy Process, this will be coming to an end, and I have not put future levies out, that's out there. So, but I didn't want to just drop that row and have somebody say, well, what happened to, so there you have it. Public Safety and Justice Persistent Problem, this is the same text as it's always been, because those problems continue to exist. With the state hospital, with Aiden Assist and all that jazz. The Behavioral Health Capacity with the CAT opening, this is where we have the Hillsborough and the Beaverton Recovery Centers with fully operational, fine-tuned operations, hopefully by Q two of next year, because I know there's continued workforce challenges there. Then I also wanted to make note of Continued Deflection Program, you know, because that's going to continue to get some visibility through the state, and so with the state legislature and committees, we'll have to make sure there's, you have continued awareness.
Chair, if I could add to that, just as a reminder, too, our deflection program is not supported by general fund, and so it is reliant on the state funding that we receive, so that's, I'm just adding the other piece to what you had shared from awareness and track.
Then there's the Public Safety Levy Referral Process, and I did not change anything, so I just kept the, the entries for this calendar year. Excuse me, and everything else in that row is as we had it. The PSNJ Capacity Study, you'll see I've marked, we need a new plan, and that will be coming to us in the future months, but beyond that, I've just left this. And the reason why I left it is because this was, along with the Public Safety and Justice Persistent Problems, that is with this row where I realized, back in October of twenty, well, September of twenty twenty-two, I asked Ms. Angie to put a pause on the RFP for the Multi-Year Strategic Plan Program, brought this to all of you and said, we don't have the bandwidth, and neither does staff. So, but we still have the problem that the jail is the size that it is, it's going to take some time. We have since augmented jail capacity with contracts for Yemhill County Jail Capacity, still having sufficiency problems, and it's gonna take a while to work through this. This is all old content, okay? So, I'll work with Erin Calvert and get this updated. Now we have some new things, courthouse planning, yay, thank you legislature. I don't know if the bill's been signed, I don't know if there's a contract from the state so that you get the funding or anything like that, but we have a row.
So, I can sure staff is actively working with the state at this point in time. I can't recall the date off the top of my head, but we will be having the first conversation about courthouse coming to your board, but we are gearing up, and this, the timeline is not necessarily a timeline that is of our own making, it is also has the constraints of the state, so this will be different than our jail capacity plan, our jail and community corrections, so I just want to highlight that difference before you have that work session.
And with one point five? Is that right?
That we received from- Well, we'll come back with what the budget allows for the planning and what that's, that scope is.
But moving ahead for the planning of that, I had previously done research on how the Multnomah County planning effort went, and the board is most definitely going to need to have a liaison participating in it. And I'll just say, we're not building a Taj Mahal, and that's gonna need to be said over and over and over again, so. Revenue Options Project, so I have not inserted any milestones in this, but we know that our general fund resources are growing at a rate, given the state property tax limitations, growing at a rate that is slower than the rate of cost growth. So, that work continues, so I should just put in a color all the way through twenty twenty-six.
I guess, Tanya, if you had to guess, when do you think we would begin to move into next steps? I mean, we've got the, we're in the process of the study.
We will be receiving your direction in October, we have a work, work session scheduled, and at that point, I will receive your direction, so I will, I don't want to venture, venture to guess because we have, there are still many options on the table, so we have to further narrow those options and then get a direction, but on the seventh, we will be coming with a far narrowed view than the last discussion you all-
It's a lot of refinement to continue to do, I'm gathering.
Yep.
Yeah, there was, well, you saw that, the various different options, that was good, I, again, timeline was, is that Chair and I have sixteen months, and we'd like to not, I guess from my own perspective, I'd like us to have some implementation stages in that sixteen months, so that you don't have to start over again when you have
Yeah.
at least two new commissions.
One of the ways I phrase that is, at a minimum, I want to make sure we've had the opportunity to build a solid base. If something has to go to the ballot, I don't know that we have time to go to the ballot by, say, November of twenty-six, but-
So, you, you both want to have a clear plan and like a pathway?
I think you should have that, so again, so you're not doing a redo.
I think that's wise.
So, on October seventh, you will be reviewing and discussing and giving direction on multiple pathways. My encouragement to you all is to continue to keep multiple pathways open
Yeah.
versus just relying on one pathway because of the amount of needs that we have, both for capital and operating.
Yep, I'm gonna put multi, multi pathways, multipath, like multipath.
I think that's very wise.
And appreciative.
Yeah.
Multiple path, this would be better, okay. Power of the red pen. Okay, Transportation Funding Strategy, this is where there's a little bit of work here because there was a prior effort, and that's with this Phase Four still carries, I didn't update it based upon the coordinated thing that's going on, so I have to update that. And then, once again, it's coming to us October seventh. Okay, the next two lines, so I kept the general LUT ordinance line, but thanks to the work of staff and bringing us the work plan on page eleven of eleven, I can't remember the date. Excuse me, these are the specifics that they have in that work plan. And I'm like, holy jamoly. You know, there's three things going on in summer of twenty twenty-six, so, you know, there isn't gonna be a quiet summer next year, sorry.
Didn't get one of those either.
Nope, nope. So, Steven's not in the room today, but I'm sure he's, he's listening.
Listening.
Me and his team are listening, so now we're on to the second page. The museum, I call it the Asset and Documents Plan, and first we need to approve an approach and then lay out a plan. So, that's coming to us October seventh as well. The ERP process, just making sure we know that there is a boatload of work going on with the go-live date in December. The, the new reports now available, that's an old note, so Ms. Angie may want to help me update this so that we're, we, the board, are recognizing that there's still, to use an old term, a burn-in period. You know, with the go-live date, things transition from old to new, but we have to make sure things are successful, and we'll be learning more in our roundtable later today, don't mean to get ahead of all of us. Okay, onward with the other yellows, Metro SHS Reform Continued Uncertainty, so this is a topic that we need to have our staff schedule. Alex will be working with the housing team, and we're gonna have to figure out the, there will be continued involvement by the full board, but also we should talk about the liaison work. For example, I know it, now's not a good day for me to hit you with all this stuff, I apologize Commissioner Willie, but I'm wondering if you should become the point person and I'm the secondary.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I think we've been pretty much marched and locked step on this together, so. Yeah.
I really want to be able to go to my cardiac rehab and graduate successfully, so.
And if it needs to be a backup on the second, I'd be happy to help.
Yeah, I think it's going to, we'll sync up with our team, it's, I tried to catch myself. It's not that I think it's going to become clearer, but I do want to make sure that we, we set things up so that from twenty-six into twenty-seven, there's continuity. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be figuring this out.
That, that's just an area where there's gonna be continued, like, I, I was having some conversations with regional elected officials where I think it's pretty clear that there's gonna be both forces that government entities are, you know, running, and then there's gonna be external forces that are pushing there as well, that I maybe wasn't, I didn't have as much visibility to, so I just think we're gonna have a lot of continued effort for a sustained period of time.
I agree, I agree, so, once again, I think it's kind of unfortunate that our roundtable is after, or it's before October seventh, but we'll, we'll, with staff's help, we'll be able to get some clarity of some things. We may be revisiting some of this again into our November roundtable and, or later, so that, for example, we've got our liaisons figured out, so we'll go from there.
Well, just add emphasis, Jason, that what you said is, Metro Council is also, we'll go through at the end of twenty-six, the transition as well.
Yep.
So, you never know what that's going to bring.
There's gonna be a lot of, yeah, just a lot of transition and change over the life.
And how many councilors are-
At least three, the president, and then at least two councilors.
And are those two councilors gonna run again?
No idea.
No, nobody's, okay.
I'm just glad, and given the nature of where we ended up without a ballot measure in November, we're gonna be looking at some pretty significant either ramping down, downward, or changes with, there's a lot of the measures, so there's so much that is gonna be going on over the next few years.
This is not the right time for this, but I'm just gonna make this a comment, and Tanya, I want you to maybe be just thinking about this, that the, I am wondering if what the tax changes that are in the big beautiful bill that now have a state income tax impact, I believe that's how the SHS tax is calculated as well, and so I am wondering what the impact that is, and I'm hoping someone's tracking that.
So, I'll just remind all of you that the SHS income tax continues through the end of fiscal year thirty, okay? So, I'll put a star there because Metro already tried the tactic of scaring people that the funding will end someday. Well, we've got four fiscal years before that happens, so four more fiscal years before that, one, two, three, four, five fiscal years. The current one we're in, plus four more, so, you know, we're not ramp- The current one we're in plus four more. So, you know, we're not ramping things down yet, people, is my point.
I didn't, but as we look to the future, that's what I was seeing. There'll be, those changes are going to be significant. For that thirty star.
I'm not going to get that far ahead of myself. Sorry. Okey dokey. So yes, we'll be coming back to it with our staff. Um, management initiatives. This is where we need to make sure we are, have an increased awareness. So we have continued organizational culture evolution going on. Training for our employees, career training, personnel code updates and the class and comp competition, uh, completion, excuse me. We continue to lose staff to other agencies because we are behind the times with our class and comp. Uh, and, you know, Ms. Angie and her team are already pedal to the metal trying to get that project done. So, but we need to recognize that they're pedal to the metal.
It's taking bandwidth.
Yeah, yeah, all over the organization, right? Job descriptions, all that. Enough, and analysis stuff. Um, emerging issues, that was a row, um, last time. Um, but they're still going to happen, right? The ones that came up at the beginning of this year, uh, were, the board was surprised to learn despite our board, uh, liaison involvement, uh, that the museum was, had a bad state of affairs. And then Donald Trump not only was elected, but boy, he's thrown us all a curve ball. So it's been quite a trajectory. So I added the federal and state funding opportunities. And the federal and state updates affecting programs. And probably the order of this seems a little odd. As a result of the Van Skoyeck, meetings, we should have all learned that there will continue to be grants and programs, but they will definitely look different than what they have in the past. Which is going to take work from our staff to recognize how it's different, see if we can still pursue opportunities and then make the adjustment. Which is why we need a new row. Because we need to appreciate that that is a workload for them. Cause that was a learning for me. Um, then we know the continued, uh, evolution of not only federal, but also state funding updates and the effect. So we need staff bandwidth to continue navigating those changes. Then the last new row is not something new to our brains, but I figured it wasn't in the table before, but the cycle of the management reviews. So what did I forget?
This is pretty important, Kelly. The only thing that came to my mind is that we have the Clean Water Services Executive Search. I didn't know where that plugged in.
Right.
In this. So do we have a separate schedule for that or?
That will be coming. That will be coming.
Okay.
Elizabeth, Pam and I are working on putting that together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair, thank you for putting together what you did here. I know it wasn't at the place you wanted it to be necessarily, but it's.
I'm grateful I had an opportunity to cobble something together because I felt really badly. You know, oh, a week ago, I was like in a panic because I usually get Kevin files for the roundtable, you know, the week before and I just wasn't able to do that. But I, I did manage to get something put together, uh, Monday night. Improved it a little bit more yesterday, or I may be off by a day, Tuesday night, yes, after our work session. We had time left in the afternoon. So, um, also, I'm interested in, um, if some rows should be realigned and it should sound simple. If it was in Excel, it would be simple. But it's not. It's a Word table. So it takes a little finessing. Which, sorry, I shouldn't be complaining. It's my own instrument. I could have done it in Excel now that I think about it. But if you think it would be helpful for you to use this by grouping things a little differently, uh, I'm, I'm totally open to that feedback. As well as if you think I've missed something or it would be helpful to take things further than the blue lines are those, uh, calendar years. And I want to make sure that there's enough populated through twenty twenty-seven so that for the new board, they've, they've got some information. So if you think that there are things, as we work on this through the end of the year to populate, let me know. Does that sound reasonable? You're all being very quiet. I thought there might be more discussion or conversation or questions. I think we've had a lot.
Comments during this.
Okay.
And this is a lot of information, so process.
Yeah.
I don't know how I would lay it out differently. I mean, it works, so.
And you commented on a few where you were going to change a number of things.
Yeah.
I think those were the same kinds of things I would have said. I didn't comment. But I agree with your reorganization.
Okey dokey. Um, great. Wow. That went a lot faster than I thought it might. So yay us. Are we ready to get into finances or do you want a quick break? Okay, uh, five minutes, ten oh five, like the schedule says? Okay, terrific, ten oh five. Thank you.
All right.
Supposed to be living in the house of the future by now.
Welcome back, commissioners.
Thank you.
Chair and.
My parents went to the nineteen sixty-four or, oh, World's Fair in New York City, I think it was, or somewhere around there. And, you know, we just, we're not in flying cars and we don't have the totally connected homes. Although, you know, the fact that my washer and dryer and dishwasher and refrigerator want to connect to wifi kind of freaks me out. So.
Well, I'm talking Dick Tracy watching.
Oh, yeah.
And we went to the, I don't know if it's fifty-nine World's Fair in Seattle.
Oh, yeah.
And that's when they built the.
Monorail?
Monorail. And that was like, wow.
Yeah.
Fine, I miss that.
Cool. Huh?
What?
Some of us weren't born yet.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm not saving you.
You missed out.
Snider.
Well, I know you, I know you missed the nineteen fifty-nine Worlds.
Yeah, three of us did.
Pam was there too.
Moving on.
Well, to the future of Washington County, we're now going to talk about the fiscal year, uh, budget planning. So turn it over to you, Ms. Angie.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and good morning, Board. Um, so guess what? It is that time of year. We go through this process. Um, as soon as we end the budget, we start planning for next year. Um, and so this, um, roundtable really kicks off that planning to take you back to last month's roundtable. We received feedback from you on, um, on the budget process this last year. You'll see that in your slides. And John will talk a bit more about what we heard, um, with you today, as well as what we heard from the Budget Committee. Uh, but this is really your kickoff, um, um, to our budget process. This, your next slide.
Catching up with them.
That means some breathe for a bit.
Yeah. John's ready with the clicker. It's okay. We're, we're, we understand. You guys are the pros at all of our technologies. So.
And I know, um, we are getting the slides up, so I'll just mention what's on the agenda today, um, as they're being displayed. Um, just some notable, um, uh, finance actions that will take place through June of twenty twenty-six. And we'll highlight what it's, what's going to be different this year than what, um, has occurred in previous years. Uh, Mr. Steyer will be presenting an after-action summary of this budget process. Internal launches, just for awareness, um, kind of some levers that are occurring internally. We will talk about the supplemental budget process. Um, your board had just briefly talked about that within, uh, your focus list. But we'll talk a bit more what, what's going to be different. What does that look like this year? Draft, um, budget roundtable topics, um, so that you can see what is going to be the cadence of your work together. And then open questions, um, and discussion. Next slide please. So some items that are going to be notable, um, through June of twenty twenty-six. Um, so I've talked about this many times, um, with you before, uh, but we have concurrent changes at the county going on, which are, uh, resulting in increased staff time to make, um, certain changes possible. This includes new systems, um, our new ERP system, not only just the implementation, but then we go to training and then there's utilization, um, that will occur in twenty twenty-six. This is a challenging timeline and implementation of ERP and new software is challenging no matter where you are. Um, it is, uh, while we do, um, have a sufficient overfill budget for ERP, this is still just a challenging timeline on top of strained, um, resources. And then, uh, with any organization, we consistently have key personnel turnover. Um, and also we have, um, personnel that need to take care of personal needs. Because we are human beings and if we don't take care of ourselves, we can't take care of our families, our, um, organization or our community. Your, uh, board, once again, we do have a draft, um, plan for your consideration, uh, for roundtables. And I've worked with the Chair on this with the fiscal focus, focus from September through January. That doesn't mean that the roundtable fiscal focus may stop at January. That's just what we have planned out today. Uh, we'll talk a bit more about the supplemental budget, so I won't dive, um, deep into that. John will cover that. But there will be a new supplemental budget that you will need to adopt in January of twenty twenty-six. Yay, exciting. New fiscal policies, um, are projected to be adopted by the board. Uh, that includes investment policy this fall, um, November of twenty twenty-five. And then adoption of financial policies will start this, this, this upcoming fiscal year to occur concurrent with your annual budget. So they will be included in part of the budget and, um, approved. The financial policies that we are working on, um, are consistent with GFOA best practice. To maybe take you back, this was, um, an area that staff had identified that we need to align with best practice. Our, uh, county elected performance auditor, um, also believed that to be true. And so as one of her annual work plans had actually looked at what policies. we have in place and where there's gaps with GFOA. So John Steyer and Deputy CFO Sarah Keen are taking the leadership role in that. And you will have a review time, of course, and discussion time of those policies prior to a formal adoption in June. And then we do have just annual financial work that must occur. Our annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFER, and then our single audit, popular financial report, the PAFER. So the PAFER really, it helps, in my mind, explain it more clearly of what is in the ACFER from a non-accountant standpoint.
Can I ask a question? I'm familiar with PAFERS. Why is it called a single audit? PAFER?
Well, it's not part of that line. It's actually a separate, so the annual comprehensive financial report, the CAFER.
Oh, and then single audit, that's right. And then comma.
Yep. And I didn't, I didn't breathe. I just kept talking. So that, that was, that was part of my, yeah, insert a comma after.
So much is new. I want to make sure I'm comprehending it right. So, thank you.
And I just want to commend both John and Sarah, their leadership, the Finance Department and departments, just for really taking your board's feedback, direction, and our auditors' findings on this last audit very seriously. And we do have a goal of completing that on time, and we're going to do our best. And I just appreciate just the financial stewardship of the team, yeah, commitment to transparency.
You're taking us to the level where we want the need to be. And I'm not trying to speak for everybody here, but I think we all understand that there's a lot of work to get us there. And as Ms. Angie says, we do appreciate the work that you're putting in. So, thank you.
I have to admit, I've never heard of a popular annual financial report.
Sure you did.
Putting popular in the same sentence with an annual report. You don't hear that.
I delivered a PAFER to you when you were mayor.
I just don't remember the popular.
Oh.
I remember it as an annual financial.
So I would think, yeah.
Community-based.
Popular has different.
It's a newer concept, too, right? Isn't it like five to seven years?
Yeah, it's, it is considered a GFOA best practice, and this is similar to the conversation that you had at your last roundtable. And I think Commissioner Phi, you brought up, like, the budget in brief or budget summary. So there's the budget, and this is on the other end of the finance. Like, how do you make this readable and digestible to the community that may not be an accountant, that may not sit through all of your Tuesday or Thursday discussions to understand where their tax dollars are going? So that, that's why it's a best practice, and really compliment the team for pushing out this last year, our first PAFER. And so we'll continue to kind of step up our ability in this to be transparent and open, because this is about taxpayer, where dollars go.
The city of Cornelius, if I might just interrupt, was the first in our region to put together a PAFER when Dave Waffles was the city manager. And from that, I brought it into Metro, and our finance director said, we can do something like this. So they put one together, and more and more local governments are using it now. It really does make the annual report more relatable. Commissioner Trish, you have something?
I was just going to say that in, in reading the appreciation and the other pieces, I'm a little, little bit ahead here, but you expressed appreciation as well, Ms. Angie. And, you know, the one piece that I'd like to get out there is, this year, and I don't know that I said it in the meetings, I, John, I really felt like there was a partnership that I could ask you a question, I, we could go to, and there, there wasn't any kind of, there was no condescending approach. It was very much like, we got to get through this together. And I just want to call that out, that your partnership with, with me, and I assume with everybody else's, is really appreciated quite a bit. Thank you.
So we'll move on to next slide unless there were any other questions. Okay.
Okay, I have the next slide, but I do want to highlight that we're all rowing in the same direction together in the boat. And so I think that is a fitting graphic.
No matter if the waters are smooth or choppy.
Right. If you read The Boys in the Boat.
Great book.
Great book. Everybody rowing together, go farther faster.
Great movie.
Yeah.
I appreciate, and by the way, this is John's favorite picture on the whole slide deck.
There's one of the, so, we're good today.
No, you recognize all the Post-its? It's not impressionist art.
We do do a lot of Post-it work. I have two slides just on budget after-action summary, and the first one is what we talked about last session with, with you all. And the second slide was some feedback I received from the lay members. Fairly consistent. I do appreciate all the appreciation that you provided last meeting. We did do a lot of work. We have a small team, and I think we made a lot of improvements. I think we felt things to improve on, but it, the matter of just prioritizing, managing workload, trying to keep the people that we have in place, and working through the process in a deliberate manner. And particularly with the ERP transition, which I'll talk about in a couple of slides, that's, that's important, too. But just highlight the future improvement considerations. We talked about the amendment process, and trying to make that more, I guess, informed or trained better, both our lay members and, and yourself on the process that we go through, so that we communicate that in a clear way. I know there were questions, you know, what can I propose? How do I propose it? And so when we do the orientation this year, I will try to incorporate some better discussion on that process upfront, so that it's clear to both the lay members and, and the board.
But there was, what I appreciated, again, it was the fact that you could bring forward, here's what I, here's what I'd like to accomplish. How do I do it? It was, there was guidance there from the staff and from, from you. So, yes, we can be better prepared, but even this past year, people, people raised their hand and said, I want to think about this. How do I do it?
Right.
And some people said, oh, well, that wasn't the best idea, and retract it as well.
Yeah. Well, and some of the other comments that I'll talk on the next slide, but were, you know, explain how you arrived at your decisions better in more detail, because they're not with us all the way. And that kind of goes to the, the third bullet here at the bottom, you know, they want to be along on the journey. We did the information session, and that was really appreciated, and they want to continue that. And then the board would like to continue that. As I was thinking about it, you know, sharing with the lay members, there's a roundtable coming up. We're going to talk about finance. Send it out ahead of time for the link. You can watch it. We'll send it out afterwards and keep them on that journey in the fall. So we also have members.
Really smart.
Thank you.
To do that. Bring them along.
And, well, I think, too, John, as you point out, this is a document that is fairly hefty, obviously, but the more questions you ask, the more questions you have.
Right, right.
And so it's definitely a spin that, that trying to get all of them together, there's no one answer, no silver bullet to the whole thing. So, but we're, I think, our process has significantly improved since we came in, in making this commission. This is a much better process.
Well, and, I mean, I think what we're going through now just demonstrates the approach of Washington County as a learning organization. We complete a process, we debrief, what can we do better next time? And this is iterative as we move forward, and we just adjust, and that's a learning culture.
I was just thinking about that word, to say, learning culture. We're on learn.
We do, every day. I'll just highlight the second bullet on the future improvement considerations. We talked last time about a budget in brief, and that's also a document that's often published by a government agency, a summary of the budget in brief. And we haven't had that here, and so that might be something in the future we work toward after we get our transition to ERP and do that. So I think that's a good add. Well, in the after-action review with our lay members, I received, I received seven good response, very good responses to my survey that I put out. Very detailed, well-thought-out. I made a few phone calls, talked to some, have not talked to all, but I'm working on that. They did appreciate the information session. They appreciated the budget book, easy to follow. One commented having a three-ring binder was easier, because they could move pages in and out, but just smooth process step by step. So very good comments. For the future, just looking at improvement in orientation training, identifying roles and responsibilities.
I, when I saw this bullet, I was like, don't we already have it? But I think.
We do have some of that. I think I just, I have to go back and look at the presentation from last year and make sure that I captured that in detail.
Well, we might.
And they gave that feedback to us. So clearly, they, something.
There's something, you're right. There's something about the experience that felt different than the overview in the trainings, because for many of them, it was their second year as well. So I think what we might consider, yeah, you know, look at the slides, you always improve things, but also make sure there's discussion amongst all of us that are there, particularly the laypeople, to say, okay, what about this now? Reflect on what your experience has been over the last two years. What haven't we highlighted here? What will be useful to highlight before you're in the throes of it?
Right.
Because we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah. Well, and some of them, you know, want to be more involved in the decision-making, as opposed to what's my role as just a, as a lay member to be a representative of the community and advocate for them versus.
Run for the commission.
Exactly. Well, that's, that's kind of what I think I need to talk more about in that training.
Yeah, that bullet did get my attention, too.
What else is on there? So just keeping them informed, like I talked about, and then the, the staff support in the amendment process. I think that while we have staff support, talking about that in the training will also help with, with the group.
Special district meetings to compress.
Yeah, so.
So what's the, you know, I'm very much a, a plus change person.
Right.
What more space is, do you think is needed? Because by January, we're going to have to start reserving time on calendars for these things.
I think the concern was they get the presentation. So they, they get the book in April, end of April, they have two weeks to ask questions. Then the presentation for like the SPD, UMD, and then that same meeting, they're approving the budget. And so.
Yeah.
After the presentation, questions, they would like.
Public hearing and the approval of the budget disconnect. So I think that's, we, and we've done this before. We disconnected the budget committee meetings from the public hearing approval date. I think it was twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one, because it was late in May. So it may not have to be that far apart, but I get your point about making sure there's the presentation, an additional meeting work for Q and A discussion, and then maybe even a third stop for another gap in there, in case they need more time for amendments for the public hearing and approval.
Right. Or, I mean, we can talk about, I was also thinking, too, we, we do the two special districts on the same day, and so one back-to-back. So maybe if you didn't have the same day, you could have a longer period for discussion and then approval. So you could kind of, instead of rushing it.
Go first, not last.
That's a thought, too.
Yeah, these are all good thoughts. We don't have the budget calendar to present to you this month. That will be coming next month. So we just want, just keep thinking about this. And even if you have thoughts outside of this meeting, happy to entertain those as we finalize the budget calendar.
Right.
Kind of like that idea. Eases us into it, too.
Yeah, and also help focus the special districts on those portions of the book that are pertinent to them and not sidetracked by the whole five-hundred-page document.
Yeah. Yeah, cool.
Okay. We are learning.
Say more about that. Are you suggesting we make a separate book for special districts?
No, no, I'm just thinking to focus them on, on the pages that are relevant to them. And I think we do that in our orientation a little bit, but maybe I could do more.
They still do get the big.
They do get the whole book, right.
Yeah, Commissioner Phi, that's been feedback in the past we've received from committee members, that it just feels so overwhelming. And then if you're on a special district, what, what part do I need to focus on? And so continuing to make sure that's clear with those districts.
Right.
Yeah, and those, the work that you did, thank you, Brenda, for putting the page numbers in the presentation slides, because that takes work, but it does help us navigate that.
Very much. And so just going back to all the internal work that we're doing beyond the budget, you know, as part of Design the Future, we're moving to the new ERP, and we're in the final stages of that. We're down to the last four months to go live in, in January, so.
Do you see he's kind of smiling?
Feel ready?
I'm very excited about it. Go back to the rowing.
While we're on the paper. The second set of information is really helpful for me to see. You know, I know the ERP itself is big, but I usually think of it in terms of finance, HR, and procurement. That's not enough. There are all these things.
Yes, there are. And they're all interconnected, but not just ERP. So our budget planning system, Questica, moving to a cloud platform, is requiring us to go back and, you know, also convert data from the old ERP to the new ERP structure, so that we have continuity of data and making sure all that's correct. And so as we go through that process of coming online, and maybe some things need to be tweaked, then we have to go back and link all the data together. So last time you talked a little bit about bumping, and that's some of the bumpiness, I think, that we will inherently have with the system. We have the new chart of accounts, which is our front program structure, that will come in January to re-adopt the budget under that new structure. It's relatively similar, but it just, it helps align things under GFOA best practice. And so I think it's a, it'll be really positive change as we're going forward to manage the system.
Can I ask a question related to those two? Maybe it's, maybe it's not the right time, but you have the current, there's the current adopted budget and the software that is, was used, is used to implement that. And I understand you have to transition before we get a proposed budget that's in new software. And therefore, I'm assuming, big assumption sign, I'm assuming that the pages may look different in some way, or take different work for you to put together this next fiscal year.
It'll be the same. It's just, it's coming out of Workday instead of out of Wizard. So the data will go direct into, from our Questica cloud platform and into the.
Okay. What I was thinking is that with a supplemental budget, maybe that, you know, there's going to be different account numbers and whatnot. I was making, it sounds like a wrong assumption, that it was easy for me to imagine, big budget currently that uses the old software, new ERP, and new software for the new proposed budget. And when I go to read the new proposed budget, it's somehow going to be different for my end-user experience.
It'll be very similar.
It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be very similar. So, so Chair.
Thank goodness.
Can I actually?
We talked about that a little bit.
I want to put a middle pile. So you have your proposed budget, or your adopted budget. Then in January, you will need to adopt a supplemental in the new system, Workday. And then your proposed budget will be in the new system, Workday.
Yeah. Okay, but my, my end-user experience will still be pretty similar.
Pretty, that's, that's our desire.
I thought, sorry, I borrowed your paper. I thought with the new proposed budget, with like the five-year. I thought, sorry, I borrowed your paper. I thought with the new proposed budget with like the five years look back or the three year look back. That I might have some disjoint.
Ableton will be.
We are going to do our best.
Yeah.
Um, that may be, that may be the bumpiness that as we work through this process, we'll have, we're, it's going to be a discovery.
Yeah.
So more.
I don't know if Brenda's the one that's going to have to hold my hand through this, but given that I'm kind of a visual person, but I might need a little hand holding.
Here for you.
Thank you.
I just covered the last couple of points on there. So new workflow procedures we, we have in finance and also I think HR as well as a business systems analyst that are helping with uh, designing procedures and workflow that'll be trained, uh, throughout the, you know, our county employees to make sure that they know the steps to do. Um, so that's a big lift. And then I'll just highlight key personnel turnover. So we just recently had, um, our, our lead ERP person in, in finance is stepping away because of family reasons. So we're replacing her. She's done an outstanding job. And we also have our controller, um, who is also stepping away at a key time also for family reasons. And so we're working through, uh, some of those personnel challenges again. And and we're, we're kind of been building a good team. We're getting there and, um, so just keep working the, the team going.
Darn.
Um, so just stepping in the supplemental process, just to have questions on this. So in the next month, we'll bring the fall supplemental. And that will, um, bring things that the departments have requested for changes due to maybe new grant funding or maybe grant funding. We don't know where to have. We're going to make a, a budget supplemental to take that money away.
Hopefully new courthouse funding.
And that, um, use contingency funds if needed.
Ask you a question. We went over our, um, rolling agenda this morning and it said September, but it's.
October. Right. Thank you. Um, and then any administrative budget adjustments. Um, and then the January supplemental budget, we'll call it a, a special supplemental, which will be to, uh, and that re-adopt the budget under the new fund program structure. And it should be very similar. It will include the adopted budget plus the fall supplemental requirements. So it'll be current budget at that state. And then the second supplemental will probably be sometime in March and then the third supplemental in June. So like we have, we have additional changes to the budget. Would we do it in March? And then again in June, I think is our plan.
Okay. So last round table, August fourteenth, we went over the business cycle. And the supplemental budget process that you had me put in was September, January, May, which is what Commissioner Fai was just reacting to.
Okay.
What cycle would you like to use? Is it October, March, May?
Well, I think because this is a special supplemental in January, I don't think there'd be any other changes at that point other than, this is my perception and we may, we may adjust this. Um, I know last, this current calendar year in March, we had a supplemental and in the June, we had a supplemental. So maybe I come back to the board with.
Well, I just need to update it for here.
You think of it probably more in quarters where we're in, in a quarter is close enough for you. And I think the planning documents and the thinking from some is more monthly.
Okay. Okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't know that it needs to be that precise, but that's why there's this.
Okay.
Communication.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I will do that.
I'm just changing it. Okay. I got my red pen out.
There you go. I, that's what I think we would do. We would do the special in January to, to re-adopt the budget. And then we would do a, our second supplemental for changes in March and then one in June.
Perfect.
I didn't have it on slide today. I just thought about that this morning. So apologize. Right.
All right. So high level, um, upcoming roundtables with fiscal forecast. As I mentioned previously, last month, we went through a budget process debrief. Here we are, September, we're kicking off, um, budget with financial planning and budget process, including, um, the overview of supplemental budget, which will be, um, specific to this year. Next month, we'll be coming to, uh, with, um, the budget forecast levers that will impact the fiscal forecast. So not the actual fiscal forecast, but here's in essence, what we're seeing that is going to impact the fiscal forecast. One thing just to throw out there for you, when you do receive the slide deck for us, one of the questions that will be, is there anything we're missing that, uh, may be on your minds? Then, uh, we will, um, come back also, uh, with a draft budget calendar for review and discussion. Um, so that we can, um, finalize that, um, cause that's important. Cause we're going to be opening the budget in a few months thereafter. November is a, a sign, a big milestone in my opinion, uh, because we have the budget and the five-year forecast, uh, protection, presentation. Uh, this will include state, um, and what we know about federal forecast. Um, uh, SIP, Strategic Investment Program, uh, projections, because this does impact our, our budget forecast. And then we will have an initial discussion on the draft budget principles and priorities. In December, we will be asking your board to affirm, um, the budget principles and priorities and establish budget direction to me. It is preferred that we affirm those in December. Last year we did affirm those in January because we had a new commissioner join. The reason why, from a staff perspective is in December, we open, what we call open or have budget kickoff for departments to open the budget. It is, I'll call it cleaner, um, if we have that formal direction set from the board in December rather than waiting for January. Otherwise I'm giving departments the initial, um, the initial, um, direction and saying that could potentially change. So it just helps keep things a bit more stable if we can do it in December. Um, while I do have this on roundtable, um, we, the board does actually adopt in a formal business meeting, the budget principles and priorities. So I just want to make that of note. So we will make sure that's scheduled for December.
You can just put BCC code in front of it. That's what usually designates.
Yeah.
Action.
Um, in January, we will have, um, the first review of draft financial policies scheduled for adoption with the budget in June. Uh, another bullet point I would ask, uh, we just had, uh, forgot to add that is, um, the supplemental budget. Is anything missing on the roundtable financial, the fiscal focus that you would like us to consider?
Um, the roundtable is going to be before the election. I thought the days. It just means that, you know, the election results will be final. I think like on December, they were December second this year. So I'm going to be off by a day.
To, to the comments and feedback that the, the lay members included, I guess, I don't know that it needs to specifically be stated here. But I do think there's significant value in bringing them along in the journey. And many of these steps probably could benefit from just making sure that happens at each point.
So we have various tools to do that, right? The roundtable plan is usually published in each of the roundtable packets. And John points them to the fact that we're having a roundtable. It includes finance and, and whatnot. So I think that will be happening, uh, but certainly they're, they're seeing this presentation today.
But you may want to invite, like, not necessarily that they're going to come participate, but it, just like last year, I was just a member of the public. We're going to be taking office and sitting, listening to the discussions for six months helped me a lot going into January. And it may be as simple as just saying, hey, you may want to come listen to the conversation or listen to it online as you pointed out earlier.
Or watch the recording afterward.
Exactly.
I want to point out it's not an official budget committee meeting because we'd have to advertise that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it, but it's still like all the prep work.
Yeah.
To that goes into what they end up having to deliberate through.
I agree. Yeah. Do that.
Any, anything else? Nope. So this is just for your information. Um, uh, this is last year's budget communications timeline. It is not, the dates have not been, um, modified or suggestions for this upcoming year. I have just put this in front of you as we start to talk about budget communications. For you just to recall, um, our approach last year, um, when we do get into the budget calendar, it would be helpful. We typically talked about this in January, but if we can even start planning earlier, um, it's helpful to get dates on calendars and try to get, um, activities, um, scheduled earlier. So I'm just putting this in, um, for your information for future discussion.
I think it could help, we'll see it again.
I, I think, uh, the work that, and you all set this up before I was really probably not involved in the process. So I want to acknowledge that. But I think the engagement that was done with local elected officials this last year, that was very, I felt done very deliberately was helpful. And I think it was particularly helpful, not only in the budget process and sort of more broad community buy-in, but also as we were moving forward with levy discussions, I think it helped provide a base level of information for those discussions. So I've, I would suggest we continue thinking about it that way. I'll also acknowledge that when we were in the middle of some of it, it felt a little bit from where I sit now as a commissioner as overkill, but I think it was the right amount for the community.
Well, so also towards that end, what isn't represented here is at each of our monthly chair mayor's meeting. You know, where we had the, the five-year forecast, where we had, uh, guiding principles and priorities. Um, I made sure that information was presented to them. So they were on the journey. What they'd like to do is be able to frame the proposed budget, right? But no, that's the job of our county administrator. Um, so I just keep letting them know what we're doing. Keep pushing out the information and entertaining all questions or if they want reviews. So, um, but it's, we have very connected, we don't have necessarily, uh, actual connected budgets. But since we're serving a common set of community members, it is a connected community budget.
Yep.
So, um, and I think that's, that's the point you're trying to raise. What I have to do every time with one of these is to put a single letter in for what day of the week this is. Because it looks like between May fourteenth and fifteenth and the twentieth, there's a whole bunch of time, but you know, weekends happen. So I remember that.
We can look at format.
The, the other comment I would make, which is more of a clean water services comment is that this, like the whole discussion we just had, I hope is also of, you know, a learning or information that's helpful. I think we talked at a, at a clean water services board meeting about trying to make sure that we mirror more of the processes around community engagement, et cetera. With the budget and, um, I just hope there, I hope the team is listening and learning. Cause I think there's improvements that can be made there too.
Thank you, Director. Uh, yes, certainly. This is something that we are taking note of. And I want to give a shout out to Brenda who reached out and we talked through this internal behind the scenes process for the county and, um, have a plan with our finance department to see how we can fold some of these. And also be iterative. We're probably not going to get it all done on the first year.
Totally.
Keep improving our processes.
Yep.
But I also want to take a moment to recognize how the CWS agency and team have been on that continuous improvement journey as well. For example, the first ever basin master plan, the East Basin Master Plan, that came to life through the CIP. The West Basin Master Plan, we're in the throes of completing, uh, and we will see that come through with the CIP. And, uh, similarly, uh, uh, one of the reasons why I like getting the C WAC mailings is it reminds me of when the meetings are, and I look at the material and they include the presentations for this current one as well as minutes and presentations from prior meetings. And I try to stay on that journey as though I'm a layperson watching it because it helps me in my role, see the connectedness of what's happening versus just getting it in our board packets. Um, I, I just can't speak highly enough about that. And we've certainly learned a lot more this year about how we can help our community understand our rate setting and rate paying. Uh, the efforts that, uh, Joe Gall and his team have put in for the, the state of the district, uh, the CWS essentials program. Uh, I look forward someday to us being able to restart the public tours. Uh, all of that really does help. And just the website getting, continuing, uh, to see the storytelling. It's on the website, but it's also brought to life in a very active social media presence. So just keep going. It all helps.
One of the things that I was with Doug is that at our November, uh, board work session day, we'll be, uh, presenting the cost of service study two point O. And I think that will be a, a big piece for the board and for the public around our rate setting process.
Awesome.
I know I'll forget that. I'm going to write it down.
This is our next CFO right here.
I thought that was you.
Current.
Up the glasses too.
This is Brenda's favorite picture.
The molecule. Yes, exactly. Yes.
Any other questions, discussion?
Thank you. Say something before we close out. I look forward to it. I know I'm going to continue to learn a lot, but I know there are, you know, I think about a big orange construction ahead sign. Uh, hard decision-making ahead. And I don't know, maybe I need to actually draw that out for myself and light it on a match and just give that worry away. Might help me and just go through it. We'll just get through it together.
Yeah, I, I would suggest holding on to that perspective. And your board has done, um, I can only speak for the last five years that I've been here. Really hard things together. And the reason Chair, I think you're concerned about that is you know that the dollars that we collect as a county help deliver services for our community. And so all we can do is work through this one day at a time. One, and right now it feels like things are, can be changing hour by hour with new information, but it's just one step at a time. And, uh, we can't develop all of the solutions by ourselves either. And so I just want to continue to, um, lift up just how impressed I am by Washington County staff and how staff have navigated through the challenges and resource constraints in a collective one Washington County approach. And we don't see that in, um, in the approach that other, um, other entities have always taken. And so I just really think we are better together and keeping that in mind as we move forward is incredibly important.
All the thanks. Cause there was, let's end on that happy note again. Uh, a lot of great work is happening, right?
Thank you. You and your team, Tommy, you and your team.
Yep. We're, we're decision-making ahead, but we're here to do it.
Onward hope.
Yes. Yes, indeed. Terrific. Where are we on our agenda? Oh, Alex, you're up next.
Yes, I am.
Oh, you get the power of the clicker. Where'd the clicker go? Oh, you got it.
After bringing up the slides, I'll just take a moment and say I appreciate the opportunity to come before your board this morning and just give, you know, this is, I think, the anniversary of my third month on the job there. So all this, the onboarding update or the update for the first quarter. And I really just encapsulated this with two slides. One, sort of my initial observations about the county council's office and some of the things we've done internally with that office since I arrived here on June 9th. And then the second slide is really just dedicated to some questions for your board about how we can better support your board moving forward. I wasn't trying to be ironic when I chose this slide background, the people in the canoe, plastic, you know, on the plastic water. It's not necessarily the best metaphor for the last couple of months.
Always want us to think is happening legally.
But hopefully that is what it looks like for the upside. That would be, that would be my hope. But it's, it's, it's been a really eye-opening experience to see, you know, my first bullet there gets to the fact that we are a very small office that I would submit punches above its weight, just given the number of employees in departments within the county that interacts with. That starts with your board, that extends to the county administrator's office, every county department, all of our other elected officials in the county, the district attorney, sheriff, the justice court, the auditor. We interact with every single one of those offices. Now, we do it because everybody has an assigned role and an assigned portfolio, but also in, you know, an era of kind of doing less with more. We have people that have taken on a lot voluntarily. So I'll just, I'll highlight Aman McCommand, who has a habitual relationship with Health and Human Services and a couple of other smaller clients. But just by virtue of being the right person at the right time and being willing, really jumped into some of our federal funding and access and opportunity issues and kind of became the face of that to the county staff or county council's office. Nobody asked him to do it. He stood up and did it on his own. But that's an example of the type of dedicated individuals we have within the office. And it, it, it allows us, right, to better support the county staff, especially at a time where we are down personnel. So we're authorized 14 and a half personnel in the county council's office, 10 and a half attorneys and four support staff. Right now, we have eight and a half attorneys, including me, and two support staff. So, you know, there are various reasons for that, some natural attrition. We've had, we've had some folks retire. We've had some, some.
CWS stole one of our paralegals.
CWS did steal one of our paralegals. DJ, if you're listening, I'm always here for you. But, but, you know, we, we are on a good track to really kind of fill some of those gaps. So we recently hired Mr. Dave Lewis, you met a couple of weeks ago, our new litigation attorney. We should have an offer out the door either at the end of this week or beginning next week for one of our new paralegals. So we, we are authorized three paralegals. We currently have one, Marissa Jocelyn, who is not only doing paralegal work, but also doing the work of a management analyst, which we no longer authorize. So she is one of those other people that has just taken on a ton and is doing an awesome job. So we're going to get her some help there. We'll have another recruitment going out Saturday this week for a second litigation attorney. And then, and we have an open recruitment right now for the third paralegal position. And following that, we'll have one more attorney position. And we should be back up to strength in our authorizations at that point. Chair.
I'm always impressed that people pursue the law, right, and law degrees. But through the course of my professional careers, I've learned that there are different types of law and people learn about the law for different reasons. I know of planners, urban planners who have law degrees. I know of folks with law degrees who like to go into the, the world of politics and the law making through the state legislature or Congress. I also know there are lawyers who love litigation. There are lawyers who love contracts. There's also private sector lawyers versus public sector lawyers. And, and I want, I would benefit from a little better understanding from you as a general counsel about the nature of people choosing to go into public service in whether they're lawyers or paralegals. Help me appreciate something, a world that I've, I view from the outside, a very honored role as an elected official, but what do I need to better understand? That I'm afraid I don't. Maybe it's an unplanned, unrealistic fear, but.
Yeah. Well, I certainly wouldn't speak for everybody, right? Because everybody has their own motivations and they're straight off to every decision in life, right? As a person who's been in public service for my entire adult life, even previous to this job, I would say that I think the common theme amongst people is wanting to be part of something bigger than themselves and serve something greater than their own individual interests, right? Certainly for attorneys, there's a lot of opportunity to go into the private sector, for example, and make a lot of money, you know, more than you would in the public sector. So those, those attorneys who work in the public sector, I think, in general terms, have a dedication to really serving the organizations that they work for and the people that those organizations serve. You know, I will, I will tell you, I, my immediate predecessor, Ms. Duke Griesen, I've heard her talk about many times how she just really enjoys the work because of the impact that it has on the community, right? And the ability to help our clients within the county solve problems that then benefit members of the community motivates her. So I think that's a, you know, a fairly good encapsulation of why people go into public service work as attorneys. Again, I can't speak for everybody, but that would be my answer. Does that help?
Yes, it does. It helps me a lot. And it also reminded me that one of the things that, one of the phrases that we used at Metro about the law department, the legal department, excuse me, the Office of Metro Attorney, thanks to Metro Council President Tom Hughes, is he helped us understand that it's really a boutique law firm. And I think that's a phrase that I think we should be putting into practice as well because of the portfolio, because of the public service work. It's, it's unique and I appreciate that.
Well, and that, and that plays into my second bullet, which is, you know, what my focus has been initially, which is really focused on recruiting for obvious reasons because we need to make sure that everybody has the time that they need to do their work and that we're serving our clients well. And the best way we can do that is by making sure we have good people and all of our roles are filled, but also ensuring that our internal policies and our culture support that last point about retention, because we want to keep good people within the county council's office and working for the county. So, so that has really been, you know, among other issues, that's internally been my biggest focus since I got here and will continue to be until we fill those roles out. And then retaining people will always be, you know, top of mind for me. So with that, unless there's any questions about, you know, some of my initial observations, what I wanted to bring before your board this morning briefly is just a couple of questions for you and Chair. I know in our one-on-ones, you've mentioned, you know, the desire potentially for some periodic training for your board. And I put up there quarterly, I don't even know if that's the right amount, but I would appreciate some feedback from your board about if training is valuable for you, what the right time, you know, frame is for doing that quarterly or something along those lines makes sense. And I've thrown some topics on there just to kind of, those are ones that came to the top of my mind, is kind of recurring themes that would be good to know. But if there's other things in looking at that list that jump out to you that are missing, either now or after this meeting would be a great opportunity to let me know so that we can do some long-term planning. So with that, I'd like to open it up and see if anybody has any feedback on that first bullet.
Well, I, I also want to highlight though that on, out in the BCC focus list under management initiatives, the personnel code update. You know, we've learned through Ms. Angie that even though our personnel codes, you know, this policy will be reviewed every three years or so, there's a huge extent of review and update there. And that goes through legal too, right? And, and the class and comp system, oh, I'll be so grateful when we get our new class and comp system and our next budget aligned too, because I know that we're way behind on that too, and it makes recruitment difficult and retention difficult.
Just a clarification on word, it's our administrative policies. I just, I want to be careful of saying code because I don't want that misconstrued with adopting code or ordinances. So it's their administrative policies.
Got it. Thank you.
By the way, one of the other observations I have since I got here is, Tanya, this is my excellent board here. Yeah.
You've earned a merit badge for three. She's an awesome county administrator.
She's, she's also an awesome peer. Yeah, that's the other thing I think I should have mentioned upfront is just Tanya and her assistant county administrators, just been awesome to work with these last three months.
I'd also say, Alex, that you have come in with the attitude that you're going to learn from others and that's much appreciated. So, you know, I think, I think that type of relationship building goes both ways. So thank you for that.
And I can't believe it's only been three months. I mean, the, the networking that you've established, the issues you've taken on, the guidance that you've provided to us just stellar. So on the topic of training, I do know we have annual harassment training as a board and I, yes, and I don't remember what time of year we tried to target for that.
Typically in December.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
And county council does not coordinate that. I'm sharing that for Alex's benefit. That is coordinated between CAO, HR, and access and opportunity.
I think the quarterly, I don't know that more than quarterly will be absorbable or realistic. I do think many of these, I need to think more about whether there's a topic missing, but these are all topics that I think we definitely would be using on a regular basis and maybe sometimes just in time training. Yep. Might be helpful occasionally.
Well, and I'll just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'll just note that I also learned that there are holes in some CWS policies with regard to covering the board and there's a whole set of Oregon requirements just for being the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. And I feel vulnerable at this point because Alan, the general counsel, back when we started in 2019, and I have assumed that you've each met with our general counsel to make sure we had training about, you know, public meeting laws, records, conflict of interest. Little did I know, there's a whole set of, for special district boards. I sit here, we're seven years in, I haven't gotten that. So I know it's not pertinent to your role as Washington County General Counsel, but.
I think you bring, you highlight a good point, which is as we look at this not being my eye-opening focused on you as the Board of County Commissioners for Washington County, but also talking with.
CWS, one person.
We don't think of these things, it's hard for us to think of these things as, you know, how, how it fits in. I mean, we, I think we all understand we have different roles, but some of this stuff is complicated enough or even illogical sometimes, that adding in the differences between the organizations just adds a whole nother level of complexity. Okay. That's very good feedback. Thank you.
The differences and the similarities, just trying to understand.
Times.
Yeah, trying to understand both.
Well, there certainly isn't a fixed list. So if, you know, you go back today and you think of something else that's not on there or in the future and encounter something where the board could really benefit from training. I mean, that's part of our function is ensuring that you have the knowledge successfully do your jobs as well.
I'd also like to put in a plug on the First Amendment. I don't know that I'd use the word issues, but a First Amendment accommodation. I, for example, just speaking as one of five, I go into each one of our business meetings with public comment, appreciating that people are exercising their right of free speech, right? And sometimes they say pretty horrible things to us as individual people. But I've learned to just listen, take it in, but it's they're exercising their constitutional right. So, and sometimes it's harder than others to just listen and go from there. But I don't know, I'm given where I sit now in September of 2025 and the nature of our, some community interactions, not just here nationally, but also internationally. I'm thinking by January, February, I would like a brush up. Because 2026 could be a long year or an intense year that way.
Yeah. No better way to start off the year than talking about the First Amendment, so.
And to build on that, I think it would be helpful for all of us, we all rotate through the vice chair seats.
Yeah.
We all are in that seat. At our last meeting, we had the disruptive person in the room. Knowing, knowing how to handle that is, you know, I think we all did a good job. I'm not worried about that, but I am concerned that there, we need, we need some training on what's the best approach there. And I know.
What our legal requirements are.
Right. And I know that Jason and Jerry have both had experience in, in leading meetings, mayors, you've had a lot of experience, but I still think that when you're presented with that type of difficult situation, it, you really need to be well-trained to be able to handle it.
Thing I'd add to this list now that I think about it, especially with new commissioners who maybe did not come up through an organization where they have land use responsibilities, but Oregon land use law and the responsibilities around that for a new elected official who's never been in an organization that does that is, that's a whole section too. Okay, great. We have new commissioners that are of that background, that might be necessary. Thank you. I really appreciate all this back and I think what I'm hearing from your board is, at least as a starting point, we'll look at some First Amendment training and then we'll think strategically about how we order the rest of these.
The other nice thing about doing this as a board is it's a shared learning opportunity without having the stress of decision-making.
Right.
And there's benefit to that. And so I think it would be good for us perhaps to consider something quarterly. They may be short, but doing it quarterly, so we have that shared experience because there's going to be a new board membership in 2027. So having, just using us as a prototype in 2026 so that for 2027, there's sort of a normalization. I'd also like to share an additional topic, and it's not necessarily a board training one. You talked about the situation in. You talked about the situation in the board meeting last month in the nighttime meeting. Yeah, okay, yeah. Medical situations come up, too. And this happened during a Metro Council work session. And I was shocked at how the colleagues and staff in the room just froze right up. And I just took command and control of the situation. And I assigned one person to call 911, another person to go get the AED, another person to go downstairs and get the security guard, and got the person laid out and just did it. Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm around, you won't have to worry about it. I'm one person.
But I think it's a good, good thing.
It's a good thing.
With the new board formation to just take stock of yourselves. Because none of us saw it coming. And you know me, I don't hesitate to just step into a vacuum. So I did it, but it stuck with me. That's all. And it just seemed like an opportunity to mention it.
Well, I, I really appreciate that feedback and being cognizant of my colleague's time. I, I would kind of combine those last two questions and just ask if there's any feedback you have today about communication or other ways that we could support your board better, you individually as commissioners. Happy to take anything back that we can help with.
I especially appreciated the education that you've been giving our respective committees. Like, in my case, the rural roads, you came in, Courtney came in and did a public meetings law update. And, and since we also have, you know, rotating people on those things annually, it's always good to kind of check back in because they don't think about public meeting laws. They just communicate. And so that's always a good reminder. So you've done a good job of that. Historically, I'd like us to make sure we continue.
Okay, thank you. I think the communication, and I think others have already acknowledged just your leadership approach and joining at a challenging time, and it's only been three months, but it feels like it's been three years. I, I think your team and you as leader of your team are doing a great job.
I also wanted to say, I appreciate the care that goes into giving us the context of situations with the hot sheet. But you also don't hesitate to send us email updates. You're available on the phone. So communication-wise, and I know I have a monthly one-on-one with Alex. So.
I appreciate what, to that point, I appreciate when you're sending us email to our regular email that there's confidential email to read. Because that is still not very visible.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. And also, I think it would be great if you and Ms. Angie and your exec leadership team could look at this list and from outside observation say, hey, you know, that might be something to do sooner.
Now, what is that crew?
Yes, exactly.
They're not even asking for.
Yeah. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
I didn't have anything else for you today, absent any additional feedback from your board. And I appreciate you taking the time to hear me today.
Thank you. So we have one more topic, Clean Water Services, Rules of Procedure. We're only 10 minutes behind. Going well so far today. We don't have slides, we just have the document. So inviting up, everybody have your document either in hard copy or online for you?
I have a hard copy for anybody who doesn't have one.
Is it the same as yesterday?
Yes.
Excellent. I'm current then.
Okay.
I'm going to let Brad lead the charge here for just opening comments that this is version two. We began this conversation at the board's last roundtable. Took your feedback, and in the document you'll see highlighted in yellow, the areas for conversation. And I just want to highlight, Brad did a lot of also independent research per the board's direction. I think he'll have more commentary to also provide as we walk through this. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Commissioners, what you see before you is 2.0 based upon our previous conversation on August 14th. As Elizabeth mentioned, there were some questions and feedback at the last board meeting. Hey, what are other jurisdictions doing? So I looked at what Falcon Hills Parks and Rec District does, what TVFNR does. And then I just took two cities. I took Beaverton and as well as Tigard and looked at what they are doing.
Did you by any chance look at TVWD?
No, I did not.
Well, and the reason that I made note of that self, I, I saw that under Section 6, how you'd looked at some others. Oh, and I cut you off because you looked at counties, too.
Yes, and I look at Clackamas County as well.
Was on TVWD because they, while THPRD and TVFNR are elected as service districts, TVWD is another service district that it's, some of its customers don't tend to have visibility into. So that's why I thought, okay, so how are they meeting? How, what kind of not personnel code, it's administrative policies, trying to use Ms. Angie's correct lingo, administrative policies. Do they have that? And I was thankful you were in the room when, in a prior topic, I talked about. We, as Jason talked about, were elected as county commissioners, but by vote of the people in the formation of then USA, now branded as Clean Water Services, were also the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. But I haven't, while I've thought about which hat am I on? I haven't thought about the actual policies or administrative policies. And it's explicit for county commissioners in our personnel, what the heck is it, administration policies, that the board has to follow the same administrative policies writ large as employees do. For it's everything for professional conduct, travel, training, it's all there. And, and now with what I've learned recently, I don't feel like I have a ground underneath me right now. I feel like I'm floating, I'm treading in water. So I'm really shaken.
Yeah, and that point well taken, and be assured, our legal team is looking at everything and seeing previous approach to administrative rules and policies and the like, and making sure that the applicable ones to the board, that they are changed, and you'll hear about it next Tuesday. So that, that is in the works as we speak.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, so I don't explicitly have a problem that you haven't looked at TVWD. But given our experience, all the experiences that we've had of this year, and how our customers don't really think too much about their water, drinking water, or wastewater until a bill comes. That's why, that's why I thought I'd mention it, that's all.
I'll, I'll take a look at what they're doing. I, I got to tell you, with our smaller districts, it's harder to find their policies, and you have to find the exact right person within the organization.
Oh, yeah.
Find that.
I don't even know, who's the general manager of TVWD these days?
I know.
Phil Matthews.
Yeah.
Yes, I've heard that name. Yeah.
So.
Thank you. Next Tuesday, wish to look at our, oh, sorry, Chair, thank you.
Yes, we know you're remote, you'll, you'll miss the executive session.
Could you call us so we can give you our point of?
No, we don't allow remote access.
Yeah, I
Oh, you mean afterward?
Yeah.
It's not this topic, it's a different topic.
I know, that's what I was asking.
I, I will talk to Caroline and make sure that
A reminder, it's still executive session material.
Right.
Right. So, like I said, what you have before you is 2.0. To some of your commissioners' points, we're trying to follow the county's procedures as close as possible. To make it easier for you, yes. So, because there are way different models out there, and we're not tackling that right here. What you see before you, I, I just want to be clarified that where I did remove some items or accepted items from our previous discussion, and you won't see that here, but it was based upon consensus of your board. Because the document got real muddled real quickly. So, and then I highlighted the areas where we're going to have further discussion based upon your previous comments. So if
Could I just ask a question when I was reading this? So there was, there's two attachments here, right?
One's red line and one's not.
Yeah, and I just, but otherwise they are.
They're the same document, it's just one
One's printed red line, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Going that up.
One commission, if I has is the one that shows the red line as well on there. So.
It has both. Yeah, clean and
Correct. Correct. So I'll just start going through the document, and we can have a discussion. In Section 3, clerk of the board, you'll see in subsection C, at the chair's recommendation to say, presented public, bargain public meetings law, you know, the clerk's going to maintain the records, etc., just to clarify that. And that's consistent with what other jurisdictions do. In section, if there's any, no questions, I'll just keep going. Section 4, meetings, there was a discussion on when to hold that, what time to hold the meeting on the fourth Tuesday, and the board's consensus was 5:30. So we added that. In subsection 3 of section A in there, the 72 hours before the that timeline, I did check what the AG's office says, as well as what other jurisdictions do. And I went to the training that the Oregon Government Ethics Commission does in the time interim and discussed that. We could go down to 48 hours, I'm going with 72 because that's consistent with what the county does.
Great.
Onto work sessions. So I cleaned it up a little bit, so it was less to, to remove the confusion. And basically, you'll see in subsections 1 and 2, it's, it's clear now that there's going to be a work session on the second Tuesday, and other Tuesdays are scheduled by the chair. And then address the issue of the district coach meetings, just put they will be periodic, and they will be on Fridays at night, which is consistent with practice.
If I could lift up one thing in there, we wanted to make sure that there was at least one time per month where we had dedicated work session time with the board. And that was, we wanted to make sure that we had one time per month that we had dedicated work session time with you all that was predictable for us and for the public and for you. So that's a little bit different, but it was to kind of blend some of the comments, and this was our proposal in that space.
Logical for me, everybody okay?
Okay, okay, great. On notice and agenda, that's not highlighted, but I just wanted to show that, you know, we're going to, our notice is going to be on the website as we discussed. I looked at what other jurisdictions did. I specifically asked the Oregon Ethics Commission on this question, and they said, you don't have to post. It's just got to be, so it's just reasonable calculation to let the public that's interested in items be aware of it. We also will, of course, have a individual email notices to folks that have expressed interest. So we already have that list set up, so they'll get notices as well.
I want to make sure I heard you right. As a general rule, OGEC says you don't have to post?
It's not a legal requirement to post.
Physically.
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 Oh, physically.
In this day and age, like
I thought we're saying electronically.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Punch me.
Oh, it was to my question, because I was questioning.
Physically.
Right.
I'm caught up with you now.
Okay.
I missed that nuance.
They did say in some smaller jurisdictions, it actually still makes sense that in this day and age, I'm
So you can save paper there, Clerk Moss.
Yes. So if we're ready to move on to subsection 6, this is, I think, where we need board direction. We had a conversation last time about how we, how we address attendance for board members. And so I have given you three different options so that you can have a discussion. Beaverton and Tigard have very complicated processes, but it's based upon their charter language itself. So I, I didn't want to get into their complicated processes. So I, I'm giving you the language that the chair proposed last work session, or she's a roundtable. And then providing you what THPRD does, as well as Clackamas County. We'll let you discuss what the board wants in this area.
I won't bore you with explaining the rationale behind the board chair one, other than to say this has been practice. I personally like the Clackamas County version myself. Because I think also that's been my practice, sending an email, notifying the county attorney and the whole board and the county administrator. And also the CEO for Clean Water Services. So that's been my practice, so I personally like aligning ourselves with that.
The main piece of content, at least to me, that's changed between both the THPRD and the board chair proposal, both have an expectation that you reasonably attend every meeting possible. And Clackamas County one does not. To me, that's, that's a difference in something about how, what we expect of each other that I think is, I think it's important to have agreement on.
And I like the expectation that you're, we are expected to attend all the meetings. I think of, in the case of a city near us, where obviously the chair didn't show up for a considerable amount of time. And in the Clackamas County one, all they would have to do is notify the board members that they were not going to be there. Versus the meeting, the expectation that you will be there. So I, I like that better.
When we, when we see at the county, our in our minutes and in our, in, for, for each commissioner, it shows whether you were attended, excused, or
Absent.
Absent. And so, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about that in relationship to the, the board chair proposal. That
Makes it clear.
That makes it clear for the expectation here and what the resulting posting is. If somebody, you know, wants to look at what your attendance has been, what your, you know, that's how they would know. So that's
Yep.
That's a direct tie to me.
Yep.
So just to go a little further, there is an expectation in your minutes that you're going to describe it's state law to, that who was in attendance and who wasn't.
But we're talking about guidelines here.
Correct.
I mean, which is, I, I think your guidelines I mean, which is, I, I think your guidelines have to be in, consistent with what your practices are, that's what you're saying, it's in the minutes. And then it's recorded what your attendance has been.
Well.
I'm, I'm hearing, uh, more support for number one than out of this group.
Okay, I, number one would be my preference.
Fine with one.
Me too.
Alright, so that's what we'll bring to the board when it comes to final.
Yep.
So, it, in attendance form and voting, uh, there was some discussion about emergencies and I provided languages as unless otherwise allowed by law and didn't refer to the charter itself. So it gives you correct spelling.
Yep.
Yep.
There could be a come a day where potentially Clean Water Services will come with a, a, a post ordinance to do emergencies. It, the statutes are silent on the issue, but, uh, we have found that at least one water district does do emergencies. But that's down the road.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
We have, we have some guidance materials from S D A O and our emergency manager is looking at different examples, um, to further refine this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a high s- Given what may happen, that's just a high standard for an emergency, in my opinion.
I just want to make sure that in the event of a, a seismic activity. Or something worse than the, um, the natural disasters or natural weather events where the C W S team has, is operationally already on top of it. But something like a seismic event, uh, we can't, we can only do so much in advance. And I just want to make sure that, uh, we have enough clarity so that the board is able to support you in what needs to be done, if such support is needed, right? We learned that with the pandemic emergency. The very end of February.
Well, and I had a pointed conversation with John Wheeler just this last week too, and I said, what would happen in that scenario, John? And he was like, well, I would of course go to the board with an, you know, emergency declaration, so we're covered in the interim until we get our ducks in a row. So.
Yeah, thank you very much for checking.
Yes.
We can sleep better at night.
Right.
As a result.
Yes.
Thank you. Or I will, I won't speak for anybody else.
Yeah, and then we would look to update this document if and when we come forward with a declaration, yeah.
Yeah.
With a policy around declarations.
Yes. Ready to move to section nine?
Yeah.
So section nine, uh, basically what I really did based on feedback is simplified public comment. And said, in a sense, you know, there will be, a comment period at the beginning and it will be fifteen minutes long and you get three, three minutes per person. Of course, if the board wants to change that at that meeting, that's, that's fine. And then, um, and then for.
We need to say unless waived by the board?
We could say that, I, there's other provisions that are generic enough that would allow you to do so.
Okay.
Um, within there.
I just want to make sure that with a new board in twenty twenty-seven, we've made it as simple and straightforward for folks to understand.
Yeah. And, and just for your information too, we're saying you can speak on any subject except for public hearings. And then in the public hearing section, uh, made it clear that it's individual public testimony only and two minutes per individual.
Is it two minutes by state?
No, this is.
This is up.
This is a.
To start governing, like reasonable time, place, manner, kind of standard, right?
I, it's really up to the board.
And I think two minutes on a specific topic that there's already been a staff presentation about presumably is fine. I don't, I don't have, personally, I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah.
If you can't explain, you know, particularly your feelings about the application or whatever it is and the statutes or the criteria that apply, if you can't do that in two minutes, then you're not gonna be very convincing.
I support this.
Right, and there's, there's no limit on how many people can testify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you looked at other counties, what did they do, three minutes, is this the consistent?
Well, I mean, you know, it's, two minutes is not unusual in other jurisdictions.
Metro's done too.
Yeah.
On public hearings.
Mm-huh, yep.
I did take out the group piece of your recommendation, because the group piece is just complicated and confused. So, um, that is the public, uh, section nine.
Can I ask a question, cause I, I don't remember. We have had occasion where we've had so many people testify, we've asked people to narrow it down. Has that been on ordinances or is that just public comment? Is that in public hearings?
You, you, you've done it for, for public hearings and you haven't done it on ordinances, but you were just doing it and you use languages if you so inclined to agree with the prior speaker, you know, uh, verbal gestures in agreement to try and facilitate as many different opinions as, at a time.
But the question is, have we, have we shortened the period?
We have, we have shortened the period at times.
On public hearings?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember.
Yeah, well, I, I guess I haven't seen it done here maybe, but it, it is allowed.
Yes.
I, I just.
It just has to be fair to everybody.
Right, and so I'm wondering if the way B is written forecloses that opportunity to say.
So maybe it should say individual public testimony shall be two minutes per individual or, or whatever the board.
Or determine.
Does, does the county talk about limited to a half hour public hearing or?
I don't think so.
Wow, okay, so that's by practice then.
Yeah, so the only, the only time limits you've limited is your public comment at the beginning, in a meeting, ten minutes tall, thirty minutes tall. The public hearings, you have not, state law does allow you to cap it, much like the state legislature does, if you so choose. Your practice has just been whoever signs up, you go through them and then proceed, but you have changed short, we've shortened the time limit a little bit. I recall a time where we went from two minutes to one and a half because we have a lot and that was the tobacco flavored tobacco ordinance.
So state law allows us, should it be a long list to, um, and I don't know how to help future boards know that, uh, so I'll just leave that there. You know, it's not like, we're just starting this with Clean Water Services, so I don't know. This is gonna be beneficial for the county too, because I'm looking ahead then to new, new board members. Um, just trying to make sure that things are clean.
These are, these are, they're rules of procedure, but they're not, uh, you know, we, we still have the flexibility to stay within this Oregon state laws. So, yes.
So that's why I, you know, I don't, I heard the guy, the word guideline used earlier.
Yeah, but I was looking to see, we don't call them guidelines, but.
No, it's just the nomenclature that the county is always using. Um, there is a provision in section sixteen that you can, uh, amend, suspend, or temporarily suspend the, the procedures by a vote of the board too, so if you wanted to change during a particular hearing, you.
Oh, okay.
You could certainly do so. I would, I would know, and it's probably not gonna be as big of an issue for Clean Water Services as it will be for Washington County, but the concept of public hearings is, um, is that everybody generally gets a chance to speak and there could be scenarios where a, a person needs to provide information into the public testimony so as to be able to appeal that decision later on. So that's why I wouldn't.
Can't cut it off.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't cut it off unless it's repetitive, that type of thing, which, uh, has happened in the past as well. So, should.
They don't get Luba appeal rights if they don't.
Have it, have it on the record.
Yeah. And there will be a, you know, you can also submit written testimony as well, that will give you those rights, but I would caution you with public hearings, it's different.
So, uh, this is actually, sorry to take us backwards, but this section then in this discussion is causing me to go back to section four, uh, and I haven't been able to find what I'm looking for. There's somewhere either in our, I don't think it's in our charter, I think it's in the county rules of procedure. It talks about the presiding officer facilitating the conversation and that the presiding officer in work sessions is supposed to ensure that there is clarity of board direction then for staff. And I can't remember how it's worded, so, um, I just want to make sure that under meetings, you know, what the presiding officer, the chair, is supposed to make sure that staff doesn't just get five different views, right? And.
And the thumbs up process.
Yeah, so it talks about by consensus, uh, here. And I don't know if we use that word by consensus, because consensus means that all five have to agree necessarily, so, um, versus, you know, we need a minimum of a majority. But I, I just, I'm not clear if we're explicit on that, so I just.
I'll go back and look, I don't know if you're referring to section fifteen, that the presiding officer shall preserve board and decorum at all meetings, which is kind of a catchall, I think, getting to what.
No, I thought if you search for the word facilitate, there might be something in there. I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
There, there is, uh, description under section two, the presiding officer under section G, that all matters that are taking votes are documented within ten days, or if the chair is, you know, opposes it, can defer to the vice chair.
Yeah, so I may just be mis- remembering old stuff or, you know, thinking about, maybe I have Metro coming in, but.
Well, Chair, I appreciate you bringing up the county too, since, um, have been allude during your last review, the rules of procedure, the county is going to be going through this process. One thing I just want to note on, um, emergency meetings and declarations, one thing that we will be considering when we update is ratif- that sometimes it is ratifying decisions that the county administrator has made, there has been the times in Washington County that we can't meet the emergency meeting and I've had to make decisions for that so that ratify my actions, however, there's nothing that states it explicitly. And so, um, I just want to remind you, we are going to be updating ours too.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry if I just brought something else up, um, or misunderstood something, so that's all.
Yeah, and there is, it, it is under the public comment period and perhaps it should be under a, a different section on page five, section nine, A two. It, it does say not listing foregoing, the presiding officer may limit the time and number of persons.
Oh, right.
In the interest of facilitating orderly visits, this is the board unless the majority of the board rules otherwise.
Yeah.
So, um, we could, we could pull that out and put it into the general meeting section, if that's.
Or we could just try this.
Yeah.
See how it goes.
We, we can do that. Okay. We ready to move to section ten? Okay, so it's, section ten is, uh, the appointment to, uh, committees, et cetera. Uh, currently, Clean Water Services only has two, has the audit committee and SEWAC. And, uh, at your board's recommendation, just remove word board.
So, on A?
Neither one.
Don't?
No. On section ten, no.
Oh, interesting, well, let me.
Let me look at.
What section are you talking about?
Um, it's section ten.
Yeah, on the, on the, he struck something. Here, it's on the red line portion.
It's on the red line, it did not.
Looking at a red line version. It's because it's removed.
Got it.
Doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist.
That's why it's not yellow.
Okay, yes, that's, that's.
Oh, yellow.
Right, right.
So just remove the word board.
Yes.
There, as was discussed in the last.
Can I ask a question? On A, I find A, the first sentence, a little confusing. Shall equates to must, but then it says we strive. So.
Yeah.
Um, I just find that so odd. Because since it says shall, it means we have to as opposed to strive. And we've not been in a situation, uh, maybe we had one early on where we didn't have a planning commissioner from some d- district and it's under the, there are very few positions that are specific to a district. But C W A C is, right? And, and I remember that there were, there was a time when District Two had more than more than it's a lot, a lot lent. That's because it's the district commissioner gets a position, they're not required to appoint someone from their district.
So Roy appointed somebody.
Yes.
Yeah, and, but doesn't that then, then it's not really shall, it should be strives.
You can't even have shall, like to me, the way this is written, you can't have shall and strives.
Yeah, in the same sense.
That's her, that's her.
That's what my point.
But we, but because of our structure, because you can defer, it should be strives. That's my point.
Say that again.
Because of our structure, for example, when Roy chose somebody from District Two to be on C W A C, it, we, he, what, he, he didn't, he had the flexibility to do that, so that means that he, they have strove? Strive? What's the term? To find somebody from, from.
It should just be change, like whatever possible appointments should be made, blah, blah, blah.
Well, I was just trying to eliminate one of the two words.
I'm just trying to eliminate the word shall.
Yeah.
Appointments will.
Or should.
Should.
Yeah, and should is the better word, just because it's less commanding.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I, so, I know some of the historical background behind this from a long time ago, and there was a timeline that previous boards, they just wanted to direct appoint people from their districts instead of it going through the entire commission.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And the, you're well beyond that, so.
But we don't want to slip back to that.
Exactly, for future boards.
Right. So, and, and C W A C does have particular district, uh, appointments.
So I, I think the word should helps it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do so. Um, I did.
And we still have that, the full, the roster, the, the appointments actually have to be approved by the board.
Right.
Yeah, as long as we got that, we're good.
Yep. And then, um, I did change the language a little bit in, uh, be to be clear that if the bylaws which are approved by the board say something different than, you know, uh, to your appointments, because they do say something different, they're, they're for longer terms, then, then, uh, follow the bylaws.
Bylaws prevail.
Yep.
Terrific.
Okay. Yeah, and then there's just some minor language revision below to, uh, to be clear that it's an applicant and, uh, not a designated.
Yeah.
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 Those are the changes there. Any questions on section ten? Next change is in section twelve and just, uh, at the, at the chair's, uh, request, added the clarification that we're gonna fill the Washington County ordinance and provide the statutory reference.
Um, quick question, and we don't have to do this now, but the other, um, since we have Zoom now, which we didn't use to have, uh, we have the option to, uh, take it intermission and reconvene the meeting virtually. You know, in these situations where commissioners just go up to their offices. And I don't know if we should in the future, I don't, we don't have to do it now. And I don't know if we should, in the future, I don't, we don't have to do it now.
Yeah.
But in the future, it may be reasonable to articulate that as a, a means for handling such a situation, because business still has to happen oftentimes, so.
And we've seen it happen in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, and I've, I haven't hesitated to use intermissions. If you take a pause, confer.
Think the transition to online, if necessary, for either safety or whatever is
appropriate.
Very reasonable.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
So I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of documenting it, that's all.
Is that in the, that's not in county language now, or is that, I mean, it probably would be in the.
Okay, so you okay with section twelve then? Or do we need to? Uh, I did highlight that which is the declared emergency, that's just for purposes of, we'll, we'll address that later, but we're gonna keep that language in that flexibility.
So I'm confused, where are you going to include the opportunity to go into a Zoom meeting? In the future?
In the future.
Um, it would be in eleven. That's where we were talking about it?
Okay, thank you. I was just confused.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's it. But it. Right, are we ready to move on?
Does the guidelines for audience members, I mean, you've been so good about having sections and A, B, C, D.
Yes, this was something I struggled with, but this was how the, I think it was added at one point.
You can format it however you want.
Well, we'll, we can reformat it. Okay, we'll, we'll do that, because it, it bugged me too. The O C D.
But it will also help us reference it, like, you know, at some point in the future, if somebody is violating them, we could point to the section.
Absolutely. Okay. I will, we will format that, we'll have Jody work.
And, uh, I'm, I wanna looking at, remembering that everyone has the right to present to the board without audience participation. Every individual versus everyone. Because they're individuals who come up and it's not a group thing where the audience has to approve of someone expressing, that's all. Uh, maybe it's a nuance without a difference.
I, I like it better. Left. Hello, Jill.
Cliff.
I'll make the change.
How are we feeling about what's happening with sign, signs these days? Is it going okay?
We had, um, we had signs from, uh, new signs at a meeting a couple of weeks ago that were about the contract, remember that, there are signs, and it, it really wasn't a problem. I was presiding, I didn't think it was a problem. I don't know if others.
Disruptive, distracting, or makes it so other people can't participate. That's kinda where I draw the line, but you know, otherwise it's sort of a form of silent protest, communication, whatever you wanna say, speech.
I don't think we're having a problem with signs, if that was the, that was the question, I think.
Yes.
Going down the list, use of video cameras, uh, we did change in the auditorium that, um, they're not allowed to go behind the area and it's roped off. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. I don't know if we have to say anything explicitly.
Well, the next.
The next.
Bullet does say that, really.
Oh, I see, no public is, I see, I didn't get it.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we just merge those two sentences so it's one paragraph dealing with recording together?
Well, it's also.
Behind it all.
Yeah, you don't want anybody behind.
Recording or not.
Okay, I get it, I get it, thank you. And there are some people who I think, uh, habitually come up to the dais as a means of intimidation as well. And we've tried to discourage that, but it's not going very well.
Of course, whatever the county decides to do on that, because we haven't seen that really on the clean water service.
You'll follow the lead.
We'll, we'll follow the lead on that.
Yep, thank you.
What, is, is it First Amendment, part of the First Amendment? Um, if, uh, individual is using profanity or like bad words, oppressive words, like what, what's the presiding officer's uh, prerogative in this situation? Stop that two minutes and.
Yeah, it's.
Free speech.
I can ask people to be respectful, but you can't stop them.
But the difference, I think if we reflect on last week, the difference there was that it was disruptive and interfering with the reading of the proclamation.
They weren't, they weren't.
No, I was.
Our time, place, and manner restriction.
Exactly.
You give testimony, they were just doing, they're just shouting stuff out whenever.
No, I'm, I'm specifically speaking to an individual that came to testify and used really.
Oh, that was disrespectful.
So, and now I would use a different terminology.
Fanatic.
Yeah, I, I would categorize it that way, but what were you gonna say?
There, there are, uh, really good lawyers who spend their entire lives looking at very narrow issues in the First Amendment. What is protected speech, not protected speech, we would have to go back and work with our colleagues at C W S in both general terms. Obscenity is not protected, right?
That's what I thought, yeah.
Threats are not protected by the First Amendment, so there are categories of speech that are not protected by the First Amendment. Um, I think getting back to our earlier conversation about training this, please.
Did you say profanity and what else?
Obscenity.
Oh, obscenity, and what else is not protected?
Threats, right, so you're not, you're not protected if you threaten somebody, you're threatened.
Yeah, well, cause you're, you're then potentially.
Or at least, I think.
In general, right, in general.
Or at least have like, uh, you know, when, when we do executive sessions, we have a statement that we read out loud for the press to know what they're to report. I think it would be ideal, uh, and just as to perpetuate educational opportunity to our residents to read out a comment or a paragraph that says, we noticed what you just did, just so you know in the future, you can keep doing this kind of a thing, and I think it's, because I think I remember in the first time residents started bringing signs, I think the chair was very articulate about the disruptions that could create, and people have been respectful of like raising, uh, and they really, to my, to my own, uh, perception, they, they do follow that, the rules the chair set. And they raise it and then they put it down, you know, so I, I, so I think it carries weight, what the chair says or the presiding officer at that time, and people, uh, especially if they wanna keep coming back, they follow the chair's rules, so maybe have a, something to say, we don't allow those kind of a language and or we don't allow it, you'll figure out.
Necessary at the county or.
Something like that.
Probably both.
Something to pull out and says, better or.
Yeah.
So I, I do wanna just like, uh, when Mr. Barnett was, um, presenting, you talked about First Amendment training. Before we do issue or have any proposed statement, I really strongly suggest go through that training. And with First Amendment rights and First Amendment speech, once again, I'm just, I'm not a lawyer, just work closely with them, we, um, we do need to be very careful, um, because there's many, um, cases for violation of that freedom of speech within public meetings.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up, Tanya, because, uh, one of the things Tom Carr was very adept at and an expert in was First Amendment rights at board meetings, and as Tanya will tell you, uh, the meetings, uh, at his previous places were very challenging as well.
And we had challenges quite frequently.
Yes, and so, yeah, there, there, there is a legal risk on how far you can go, and as Alex mentioned, you know, there are lawyers that spend their entire careers, um, addressing this very issue, and it is challenging because there are speech rights as well as to redress grievances of your government that's in the First Amendment too. So it, it's tricky. Obviously, we would be more than happy to work with the county on.
And if somebody makes it, if, would it be perceived as retaliatory if we said something to them, I'm just trying to make sure that.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's very tricky.
Yeah.
And that's where the, the training is.
Critical.
Valuable, yeah.
Sure, if it's okay, I.
You have to.
I got a hard stop at noon.
Yeah.
And so, but I'm okay with the changes so far, but I, I like the conversation, just, I'm okay with this.
Step up, yeah. I, I think we're almost done.
Yep.
Uh, Director Willie, uh, we just have section fifteen, and all I did is you'll highlight it in subsection B that there was some funky language in there regarding, uh, greeting board members and staff, the public with dignity for, uh, courtesy, and I just kinda uh, updated it to be consistent with what your board, uh, directed us at that time.
So I think you may need a D that says that this information does not replace any requirements through, I don't know what you call it at C W S, whether it's personnel code, administrative.
Principles of respect.
Yeah.
And.
And.
Yeah.
We don't know what it is. We've never received training on what it is, so.
Another note.
Yeah.
Services, we probably need training on those things.
Yep.
Absolutely, and, um, that has become very apparent here recently, and I be assured that's gonna happen.
So sixteen?
Uh, sixteen, so there was, it, it was an ass.
Robert.
Yep. A Robert's Rules and Order, I, I just put in there, you know, some vague language, it says you can rely on Robert's Rules and Order if you got a backstop to something.
Yep.
Is there any questions with that? Okay.
This is why our general councils or whoever sitting at the general council seat in meetings has their pocket edition.
Yeah.
Cause I rely upon asking them.
And Chris Moss.
Yes, yes.
So with that, I think we've got direction, um.
I know Commissioner Willie's.
He was thumbs up.
Yep.
Yeah, so we will bring.
So, um, right now, I think it's slated on the rolling agenda for our business meeting of the sixteenth.
Correct.
Um.
September or October?
I thought it was September.
Okay.
Um, that may change. Uh, I'm, I want the review and the training before we start having separate meetings. That's what, that's my point. I don't have a problem with, at all with these rules of procedure, but I, as one, uh, nor do I want to be presiding officer over meetings, standalone meetings for a service district where we haven't gotten training.
The only training, I think that, so the plan all along was to make the, the big switch on January one. So is it fair to say we'll rely on those rules until January one, or?
Yeah, I think so, we can.
Yeah.
So, um, it, like I said, we'll, we'll have the executive session next week.
Correct. Okay.
And I'm hoping that further information with a little bit more time than just one day, that will, you'll be able to inform us better then than where, how we're informed now. That's all.
Okay, we'll do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for today's roundtable agenda. Did anyone have anything else? Okay, we are all clear on when our next ones are, uh, and we'll go from there. Thank you, we're hereby adjourned.